Good evening. On behalf of the Lake Stevens Planning Commission, I am Janice Huxford. I will be conducting the meeting this evening, September 18th, 2024. If I could please have a, um, let's have the Pledge of Allegiance, actually. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Again, welcome. We are a thin planning commission today, but we're here with lots of vigor. So get ready. With that, let's have a roll call. Commissioner Morton.
Uh, here.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Dewar.
Here.
And again, I am checking in. Do I have a motion to approve? The absences of Chair Davis and of Commissioner Packard, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We appreciate them letting us know prior to not being here that they were unavailable this evening. So with a quorum, we can make any sort of comments that we need to, but tonight we are going to begin with any guest business that is available. If we have any guests that would like to join us, please join us at the podium. State your name. Thank you. So for any guests wanting to make comment, uh, the podium, please state your name, address if you choose, and three minutes is your limit.
My name is Sally Jo Sebring. I live on 99th Avenue Southeast, kind of halfway between Target and 20th. So I've already talked to David today for a few minutes because I had some questions about when I dug into stuff. So there's some of those details, I think, well, there's some questions about numbers and stuff like that that are really important, but I think there's going to be some clarification. So I'm not going to talk about those tonight. But I, I know you guys haven't heard a lot of input yet, and so I just want to throw some things out because I know a hearing is coming up and that's kind of, you know, that's kind of like the last ditch effort. So I wanted to start throwing some things out. Oh, I was gonna. Just so you know, some things to think about that you might not have thought of. And this is all about multifamily residential. So the sites that I've seen, the only sites that I see that are currently on the map, I'm, are, um, I'm going to start the farthest away from me. So up between Gray Road and Hartford Road. I understand that's a plat, planned business district and it's not, you know, that hasn't been a zoning that's really worked, but that already has a permitted application, I mean approved application. So to me, it's, it's not a great time to change. It seems like it should be changed after it. And also Catherine Creek, which is a type F stream runs through, right through that property. And I think some of the parcels are actually, I, that are in the map amendment, actually, I know there's mention of city-owned properties, but I think some of the map amendment map is actually some of the city-owned properties too for the possible restoration of the old. So that's, that's my first one. Next to the 20th Street near the Tressle. I don't know if you guys have been to these sites, but 20th Street near the Tressle. I, that just seems amazing to me that, I mean, the, I can't imagine where you'd access that from because you certainly, I would hope not access it from 20th because that's, if, if, maybe you guys don't drive up there, but if you do, it's terrible, especially when there's any traffic. So I can't imagine putting apartments in there. If you were going to access it from Cavaliero, I, from my, from looking at maps, it looks like you'd have to access it through unincorporated Snohomish County because the, I think the UGA is right on the edge of those properties. So that just doesn't seem like a good option either. Um, and now we'll get to 20th and 99th. So that's obviously closest to home. And at first I was like, but then I'm like, and I, and you know, we've already gotten a lot of growth in the 20th Street sub area on our street. But what, in thinking about it, it's like, okay, there are some good reasons to put some stuff there. Like downtown, you know, does have some apartments, Lake Stevens Center has some apartments. There's only really one that I can think of in the 20th Street, um, sub area. So I'm like, okay, and there is transit. That is true. The terrain is a little bit tricky. That's another place. If you haven't driven there, I think it'd be good to drive through there and go, okay, yeah. You know, there's hills and stuff. So how that would work, I'm not quite sure. Services, like that was mentioned that there's services. I mean, Tom Thumb is down there and there's Costco, but people don't really walk to Costco to do their shopping, I don't think. So that doesn't, and there's not, I mean, there's a few restaurants, you know, whether they'll, no, okay, I'm going to remove really fast. So that, you know, that's okay. I do want to tell you, because there's been some mention about, you know, I listened to some of the meetings and what it impacts the people, like, from what I counted, there's like 27 landowners that would be involved, not 27 parcels that are involved in those two sections on 99th. That's a pretty big chunk of property. A developer owns a chunk of those, but not the majority probably. And so if you make the whole thing into multifamily residential, it means individual property owners will get stuck with a very high, much higher density than it is now around them. And because it's all the same zoning, there won't be any kind of buffer. It will just be like, okay. And those are some of the hardest developments I've seen in recent years is when someone lives down here and all of a sudden, because they're in the same zoning, you know, someone on a hill and then a three, three-bed, I mean, three-floor townhome comes in that's in the backyard, basically. And so just, just a thought about that.
And Ms. Sebring, if perhaps we could maybe give us one more?
Okay. Let me see. The other, the other thing that I really wonder about is there's no manu, uh, manufacturer, multifamily residential has no, they can, you can pretty much build anything there. So you could build like single-family homes. There's just a lot less restrictions. Like you could have them taller, you could have them, you know, I couldn't tell whether there was any minimum lot size. There's some setbacks. So just because you zone it multifamily residential, doesn't mean you're going to get zoning that's, that's for zero to 30% or zero to 50% housing. You might just get houses closer together, which won't really serve the people that we thought we were trying to serve. So my suggestion would be to wait until we get other things in place. Because just having multifamily, if you just make a bunch of multifamily, quite likely, I would expect that it would, without partnerships or anything else in place, those are just going to get filled up like every other space in the city. And then those income groups that we're trying to serve are not going to get served there. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for giving me a little extra time.
Oh, I appreciate your comments and thank you for joining us this evening. There is more than just one opportunity, by the way. We are going to have a public hearing in October, but there is also the City Council public hearing. So, um, do we have any other comments from the audience? Any other guest business? And has anyone joined us online?
No.
Okay. We did get several comments that we'll talk about that were written and sent in, in the packet. So be aware that that is coming. Moving on, um, number four is our August 19th meeting minutes. They were lengthy. Did everybody have a chance to review those? And were there any edits to what has been presented? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
That has been approved then. Thank you so much.
Vote.
Any opposed?
We got to vote.
Oh, you got to vote? That is true. I was going to say, no one's going to oppose if you both seconded and no one said anything, but all right. Second approves. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then let's move on. Discussion items this evening. We've got several discussion items that are going to be presented and we'll move forward with Senior Planner Levitan speaking to the 2024 Comp Plan Updates.
All right. So David Levitan, Senior Planner. Um, so we are here tonight for the Planning Commission's Plan Final Work Session to review the draft comprehensive plan in advance of moving on to public hearings before the Planning Commission on October 2nd. And then the City Council, which is scheduled for October 22nd. So don't have a lengthy presentation tonight. We're just going to give a brief overview for anybody that hasn't been following along. And then just introduce some of the items that were included in the packet and just offer the opportunity for commissioners to ask any questions, provide any direction in advance of the public hearings. There were several attachments in the packet. As Commissioner Huxford just pointed out, there were some public comments that were included in the packet. That's attachment one. Comments that we've received from public agencies that have reviewed the plan, um, which were attachment two. And then there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting, just wanting to make sure that there was adequate notice provided to property owners and nearby property owners of the proposed map amendments that are included as part of this periodic update. So there was an example of the public notice that was done for that. So I'll go into that a little bit more, just as far as some of the public noticing that was done. We have started to receive some additional comments as we expected, um, that have just been coming in this week since the packet was published. Had a number of phone calls and emails. I'm so happy to get into those, but just a brief overview. So obviously updating the comprehensive plan needs to be adopted by December 31st of 2024. The city issued its public review draft back on July 26th, sent that out to agencies, tribes, the public, other groups, stakeholders, website, social media. The Planning Commission, during their August 19th meeting, provided some initial feedback on that. That was appreciated. Staff has become, has been incorporating those comments into the public hearing draft as well as comments from the Planning Commission, comments that we received from the City Council during a subsequent September 4th work session with the City Council. Public comments, comments from the different agencies. Um, a lot of the focus has been on the agency comments. Just those have been the most extensive. And so that, those were included as attachment to PSRC, Puget Sound Regional Council, Department of Commerce and the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife for the kind of the most detailed and complex comments. And so happy to get into a little, those a little bit. But in general, the public comments, a lot of them were focused on the map amendments, concerns about traffic and level of service. And then some questions, including from Ms. Sebring regarding kind of the land and housing capacity analysis, which we are refining at this point. Those were some comments that we had received from the Department of Commerce and PSRC, just that we needed a little bit more detail on the quantitative analysis of that. So those will be reflected in the public hearing draft that circulated in advance of the October 2nd hearing. So just a very brief summary. So the Puget Sound Partnerships Environmental Coordination Board, as expected, focused a lot on salmon and Puget Sound Recovery and the city of Lake Stevens, uh, impacts and contribution to that. Wash Dot had pretty limited comments, really appreciating the focus on complete streets and just providing some different resources available to the city. DNR, Department of Natural Resources, a lot of it was focused on making sure that we had maybe a little bit more discussion of, of natural hazards, specifically geologically hazardous areas, um, kind of the impacts of climate change on natural hazards. So we have incorporated those into the public caring draft. DFW, Department of Fish and Wildlife, um, a lot on regional watershed coordination, climate change impacts. Had numerous comments on kind of coordinating wildlife corridors with other transportation improvements and other public and open space improvements. Shoreline management and then critical areas protection. PSRC and Commerce both commented on our land capacity analysis that hadn't been included. The actual land capacity analysis was referenced, but wasn't included in the draft. And so we're refining that and that will be reflected in the updated draft that goes out in advance of the public hearing. A little bit on that, some other kind of statutory requirements and the revised code of Washington and the Washington Administrative Code. Specifically the Growth Management Act, as far as some of the items that need to be specifically reflected in the land use element. Natural hazards mapping, climate change impacts, regional GHG approaches. A lot of things that were in other elements of the plan. But if you read the, the letter in the law of the Growth Management Act, they're supposed to be specifically discussed within the land use element or at least referenced. So adding those things back in. Commerce also had some questions and wanted us to beef up our analysis of displacement risks as well as racially disparate impacts, um, and then also address topics related to equity and environmental justice. So that's kind of a brief overview of some of their comments. At the Commission's August 19th meeting, we went over some of the proposed map amendments. So that had been circulated back on July 26th, when the public review draft was issued. Since we met with the Planning, since staff presented that to the Planning Commission on the 19th, basically right before the September 4th City Council Work Session. Made some revisions to those, basically scaled back and number of the proposed amendments that would increase supply of detached, single-family residences and middle housing. Basically because there wasn't a documented need at those income bands. So we felt that it was best to hold off on those and really focus our efforts on where the documented needs are. And that's mostly for increasing the supply of multifamily residential. As Ms. Sebring noted, there is no guarantee that just because you provide the capacity that it's going to be built. So it's kind of a symbiotic relationship between the zoning capacity and then developing policies and programs, developing partnerships, um, you know, developing programs as far as incentives based or regulatory based as far as how the city can, um, you know, try to provide these levels of affordable housing, especially at these lower income levels. The region has not been very successful over the last couple of decades in getting that type of housing built. And it's something that there's going to be really a focused effort is going to need to be made and it's going to need to be done at a regional level. So we are going to need to focus a lot on the implementation of the comprehensive plan on developing those programs, on developing those partnerships. So that's going to be the next stage. This is providing the policy foundation, but we really are going to need to focus on that in the coming years. And then as noted and included in attachment three, the map amendments were publicly noticed last week. So sent out postcards to all affected properties as well as all property owners within 300 feet of a proposed land use map and/or zoning map amendment. Posted land use notice signs. I believe there were 57 signs, something along, something along those lines that were posted throughout the city, basically along the perimeters of the affected areas. Posted it on social media, on the website, basically trying to get the word out. And as expected, we haven't gotten a flood of comments, but we've gotten more comments than when we received in the weeks before that. So that is, that was the intent. We're wanting to see what people think. Because this is a public process and we want to make sure that it reflects a variety of different opinions in the community. So as I noted, the postcards went out last week. Um, there were unique postcards that were created for each rezon. There's basically been a number that's assigned to each one. And so that was then sent out. So it directed people to what's called a story map. It's basically an interactive map that provides, it's a combination of the map plus additional material to provide additional context on why these changes are proposed and why they're needed over the next 20 years. And so happy to, if the commissioners would be interested, I can pull that up after I close the PowerPoint. I can pull that up on the map if you'd like to look at any specific areas, but it is intended for somebody to really be able to get in. There's actually kind of a slider on there on one of the images where you can show the proposed versus the current. Kind of go back and forth and see the actual changes that are being proposed. I did want to give, you know, very much kudos to Jill Needham who developed that in-house and just did an amazing job on it. Not just the mapping, but also developing the additional context, writing the narrative. She's really done incredible work on it. So I just wanted to make sure that she was recognized for that. So again, staff is currently revising the plan to address public and agency comments. An updated draft will be issued in advance of your October 2nd public hearing. The city will be issuing the SEPA threshold determination. Uh, the environmental checklist is largely done. Basically evaluated potential impacts. And we'll be issuing that threshold determination. The Planning Commission will be holding that October 2nd hearing and making a recommendation to City Council. And the council will hold their separate public hearing to consider that recommendation. So yeah, I didn't have a really a set agenda. If you have specific comments about any of the topics, any of the materials within the plan, within the map. You know, if you'd like a little bit more detail on anything related to the noticing process or anything else related to the public process, happy to tackle that. Anything that you want to make sure is incorporated into the public hearing draft before we issue that. Happy to just take the lead from the commission. And as I said, I'm happy to bring up the map if you have any questions. So thank you.
Yes, please.
Um, I, I'm glad you brought up that, uh, planner Nita did the, created that because I thought that that story map was such a fantastic tool and really lowered the barrier to, um, anybody who maybe isn't a constant viewer in our VAS. To be able to get, it was, the information was just distilled in such a user-friendly way. So I wanted to, that was one of the comments I wanted to make tonight was that that was great, that link. And then the whole interactivity of it was wonderful.
Did anyone try the QR code?
I didn't try the QR code. I just went to use the link.
Try a sign. Yes.
I did not.
Try it.
But I have done.
It's great. Yeah. It's very slick.
I had just a question on the, on the, on the card that went out. Did that go out citywide or did that go to individuals with properties within a certain radius?
So yeah, that was sent out to obviously the affected property owners and then the municipal code requires that to go out. So it went out to those within 300, either affected property owners or people within 300 feet of a property that was proposed for a land user zoning map amendment. So it didn't go out citywide. If we had done it citywide, that would have been a little bit more extensive.
Might have broke the bank.
And yeah, the, the costs obviously would have been pretty excessive, but you know, we, obviously we try and other avenues to get the word out, um, you know, trying to get it out via social media, via email, through different routes. And we understand, you know, it's, it's hard to, it can be hard to reach people. And if we had unlimited funding, you know, um, we would, you know, maybe consider doing it as a citywide email, but yeah, if, encourage everyone to spread the word if you have different networks and, um, you know, that you can engage as part of this. We want, you know, this to be a plan that's representative of, of the Lake Stevens community.
Commissioner Morton.
So, um, as you mentioned, and is also stated in the second paragraph of page five, uh, how you, you pulled out all the, um, the rezones from the low density zones. I was surprised by that. Uh, it's, um, and I'm afraid that doing that undermines our own goals of, of, uh, of providing, uh, affordable housing in the higher density zones. Because it's like squeezing a balloon. If we restrict more development in the lower zones, but allow more development in the higher density zones. That's just going to drive up prices in those higher density zones. And, uh, because the number of people wanting to move here is, is, is going to drive up those prices in those higher density zones are going to. And so, um, I think that's just going to make things more difficult to get to be able to accommodate those, uh, those lower income bands. And I was also thinking about this whole idea of, uh, the, the AMI, the area median income. If we are successful in encouraging more development in, uh, for those lower income levels, that will lower that AMI. Right? It'll make the AMI number theoretically lower. That will, uh, you're shaking your head, but let me just, yeah, carry on my thought. If that lowers the AMI and then we rerun the numbers, oh, all of a sudden we're out of compliance again because now the band of people that are in that lower median income, it's even lower. And so it seems like no matter what we do, we're never going to meet that goal because it's just going to be pushing the, the goalpost further and further out. So, uh, and please tell me why I'm wrong.
So it, it's not about the, the housing valuation. That's about what it costs. It's, it's about the county-wide statistic of what people in different occupations countywide make. That's the indicator. It's their income. And then the housing price has to be 30% is what's considered at the lowest end affordable. And then there's the, the scale. So it's really not about the, the housing price. That's an effect of the market that the people within certain job categories, demographics throughout the county don't have the tools and means to then afford a market rate home. So the, the two are related, but they're not the same metric, but I understand absolutely your concept makes sense that the goalpost continues to move. And that's, you know, what all of us along this line have been doing for 20 years is trying to catch up.
So the, the area of the AMI, is that Lake Stevens, the county, the state? What is it?
So it's, we use a countywide metric, but that's also the four county region gets counted in some data, but as you go through the growth projections and Dave, jump in anytime, at what point do we dial down to the county? And at what point are we looking at the regional average?
So it's largely a regional average that then, that then it's kind of, you start at the four county region, then the numbers are allocated to individual counties. Then the county go through a collaborative process where the cities basically go through this process to divvy up the numbers to, to develop a model that then distributes the different units at different income levels. So in Snohomish County, that's done through Snohomish County tomorrow. So we work collaboratively with all of the other jurisdictions. So it's by no means, it's not a city-specific metric. And because of that, it's very much an inexact science and the distribution of units is affected by your current supply of housing. And so if you're looking at a regional level to provide for all of the, basically allocate the units at the county level, the existing supply within each individual jurisdiction is going to influence which units at which income band are distributed to them. So if you're up in Darrington or out east of, you know, in Granite Falls where housing costs are generally lower than Lake Stevens, they're going to have, and incomes are presumably less. So they already have a built-in population of lower income residents. They're going to be allocated potentially more units at higher income levels. And so I understand that that may not make a whole lot of sense, but that's the methodology that we utilize in the county and that's largely a little bit that King County does it, Kitsap County, I believe, does it the same way. So it's, there's, yeah, it's a difficult process to navigate and it's, it's hard to do and it's, it makes it so it's, it doesn't always make maybe a lot of sense to people, but it's, it's wanting to try to avoid basically just aggregating or, or, you know, centralizing everyone at a certain income in certain parts of the Puget Sound. And so it's trying to afford opportu, housing opportunities and all of the individual jurisdictions for people at different income levels and to provide the housing that meets those needs. And so, um, as far as your first comment about, you know, artificially maybe suppressing the supply, um, you know, the reason that we did that is that there's already a pretty large projected excess capacity when compared to the projected demand. So when you compare the 2044 growth target to the buildable land. So when you compare the 2044 growth target to the buildable lands inventory that shows that, you know, overall, we have adequate supply. If you've just looked at it as housing units and we've had this discussion, it's that we have a ton of supply at 100 or 120% or more of AMI. We don't have very much supply at the lower end. So we're having to kind of move the numbers around and we're having to change our zoning to do that. And so even without proposing any up zones from say R4 to R6 or R6 to R8 12, we already have more than adequate capacity. And so you can make the argument from maybe a supply side economics side of things that, hey, we should just keep continuing to increase the supply at all levels. But we're also dealing with specific growth targets and we're not supposed to be planning for, you know, this huge surplus of it because individual jurisdictions are allocated their individual growth targets. And so it, it makes it hard. And it's, you know, from a SEPA perspective, from a growth management act perspective, we, we really need to be planning to our growth targets instead of just saying, hey, we're going to upzone everywhere and we're going to have an excess supply of 10,000 units. Like bring it all to Lake Stephens. That's from a regional planning perspective, that's unfortunately not something that we're really, you know, able to do.
Yeah, the, the practical side of that also is when we had sort of talked about some of these potential rezone areas with the commission, we had identified areas that we wanted to maybe have the actual zoning reflect the existing land use pattern. And those are a lot of the areas that we actually took out because those would overinflate our, our numbers mathematically, even though functionally they're built out. So those are really some of the areas we peeled back, not some of the, the larger assemblage areas that, you know, we'd sort of identified for multifamily or others, some higher density. So it sort of the two go hand in hand. There was a practical reason and then sort of a compliance region, reason that we didn't want to exaggerate those numbers where they didn't need to be.
So do, does it end up being where most of the actual rezoning from R4 to R6, R6 to R8, do those end up being more like on an individual basis? Cause you, you get like a homeowner who's got this huge lot and they want to subduize it. It, it seems like that, that's what, what happens more between these big, you know, updates of the, of the, of this, the city plan.
So there are two processes. There's what the planning commission primarily does. You're in charge of the land use map. So that's the big broad category residential, multifamily, commercial. And it's just like setting the goals in the policy. So you adopt the large level map and then the administrating policies. And then on the individual basis, if someone wants to rezone their property and the zone is consistent with that land use map and they meet the criteria, that happens outside of the planning commission's purview. If it's an area wide rezone associated with the comp plan change, then that's back in your, your purview. But yeah, the, the two can and do happen.
Okay.
Separately.
Yeah, that's all the comments I have.
I have a couple of comments. I actually liked the change for the reasons that have been stated, so we won't have to go into those. But I thought that we've been in front of it for far too long. And perhaps this dials it back a little bit. We do have somebody that's trying to get ahold of me that is trying to be let in. So perhaps if you could look and see if somebody is, well, I think that this might be a user error.
I don't see anyone in the waiting room.
Okay, let's, I will suggest to this person who has my phone number that he get ahold of staff and see this when it's broadcast. He's the same person that I had referred when we met last month. And then finally, I did receive notice from Chair Davis that the issue at the school has been resolved. So for anybody that was wondering, I think we're in good shape. Are there any other question or comments from the commissioners on the first piece of the 2024 comp plan?
I had one question.
Go ahead.
It's really granular. Yeah. It was just, I was just curious about it. It's in the, on page 25 of our packet and it's a fish and wildlife comment. And it is 4.2. And it's the new policy that says require proposed bulkhead rebuild projects to evaluate the effectiveness of alternative designs. And I was wondering, just super briefly, because I know it's not that important. But if you could address how that would be different from the, what it is now, which is consider alternatives. And this would be, so would it be like sort of they have to generate a report about whether they considered it? Or how, how is that different from what it is now? And by the way, I can also follow up with you offline.
Yeah, no, and I, and I had looked at it and there were a number of fish and wildlife comments that probably were more regulatory as opposed to policy level. And ones that we, you know, had discussions with them and kind of provided them an initial response to some of their comments and noted that a lot of this is going to be through implementing ordinances where we update either our critical areas ordinance or our shoreline master program. And that's where we really tackle these items. And I think they're wanting to provide a little bit stronger policy language, but we haven't gotten into maybe that level of detail on the comprehensive plan. And so I probably have to circle back on that. That.
Shoreline master plans.
Yeah, their, their comments were pretty, pretty detailed and pretty kind of went beyond policy level and really shot into some of the things that we're going to tackle through, you know, any future critical areas ordinance or SMP updates.
Okay, that makes more sense.
And so.
The heck are they getting into here for a conflict?
Yeah, no, I understand where they're coming from and they're wanting us to provide the policy foundation. And it's like, you always have to balance, like, we don't want to get so prescriptive in our comprehensive plan policy language that it's like the, the, the most minor thing changes at the regulatory level. And then our policies or our comp plan policies are not consistent with the actual implementing ordinance. And then it makes, that creates its own issues. So.
Okay, thank you.
My, my comment was DNR is live and well. It's good to know.
Yeah.
Makes me feel better inside, just that, you know, all of our state agencies are working on my behalf.
All in all, though, if we look at the big commenters being Puget Sound Regional Council and Department of Commerce, even though I know they had a laundry list in our conversations with them, they were pleased with our plan. Especially PSRC was very pleased with the direction the plan was heading and it really hit all of the big boxes. So there's just some refinement now. And as Dave mentioned, it's, it's finding this balance between, you know, a wishlist and not being too prescriptive when we're creating goals and policies. So when we get to the development code, development standards, we'll revisit some of those topics. And a lot of those things sort of came up in this discussion tonight as well. It become future topics that we'll talk about shortly.
And before we move on from comp plan, just for the edification of those that are here in the audience and will be listening in on later. We broke this down into individual sections of the comp plan. What you're seeing now is the result of that. But this has been lasting for months. It seems like lots of months. And each piece was very deliberate and very thorough. And discussion on each of those pieces have been now culminated, accumulated into what you're looking at now. So please know that we have not been biting this elephant off all at once. It's been a while.
Can I make, I'm sorry.
Of course, please do.
I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the people that took the time, citizens who took the time to make public comment. And thank you, Ms. Sebring, for your time tonight. It's always so great to hear from the community on it. So just want to say that.
Thank you. With nothing else, let's move on then. Community Director Wright.
Thank you. So I wanted to just check in with the commission tonight on our annual work program and sort of talk about what some of our next steps are going to be. As you know, we adopted the work plan every year. It's always a pretty lofty plan and we know that there will be movement on it through the year. And as we ended up focusing on the comp plan this year and at the same time, our development review process was still very steady. We didn't get to all of the code amendments that we wanted. So we finalized the handful of code amendments that were carryovers from 2023. And then we've sort of put a pause on those until we could finish the comp plan. And so just wanting to talk about kind of what's next this year and what we're prioritizing. So as we move into the latter part of this year, we need to do an update of our streets and parking code. That's tied directly to the transportation element and it is something that had been a budgeted item for us to work on this year. So that becomes really important for us to, to focus on. It really helps us set our budget and our capital priorities moving forward. And it's really important to reevaluating the development standards for the community as we talk about affordability, environmental issues. We just need to make sure that our, our street standards reflect those values as well as that we're looking at our parking code to make sure that it also reflects those values. You know, maintenance, again, environmental issues, stormwater controls, functionality, price. So got to get going on those. The other thing that we're really looking at is our process code. And this comes out of the state requirements from last year's legislature that we need to streamline our process reviews. And so we're taking that very seriously. And as we look at that particular body of work, we want to sort of tackle it like we did the code cleanup that went through this body end of last year, beginning of this year, where we break it down into, okay, what's the regulatory compliance section to align with the Senate bill and the local permitting process act? What do we want to do as a code cleanup? And we want to do a scrub of sort of all of the chapters just to make sure that there's not internal confusion with the process chapter and individual authorities that they get sprinkled out through the code and other sort of administrative documents. So that's really the, the goal of those next two code updates. We're also working with our parks and our public works teams to address our impact fees. We've done some great analysis and thank you, Dawn, has helped us really take a look at lots of other jurisdictions and what their fees look like, what their impact fees are. And then comparing ourselves to the jurisdictions between 30 and 50,000, reflecting on the levels of service we have adopted or will be modifying in this document. So again, those become really important and it also becomes tied to our budget. That is, we're making revenue projections and looking at our capital projects. That's the list we have and what the expectation is of the plan are the dollars and the levels of service aligning. So that's why we're also going to be working on our impact fees throughout the end of this year. And when we go into next year, as an outcome of the new goals and policies from the comp plan, we will start revisiting our housing development regulations. Again, to make sure that the goals and policies, the foundations that we're establishing now, we're able to affect through modifications to our zoning code, whether it's allowed uses, housing types in these different zones. We will revisit that going into next year. We'll also be looking at, are there incentives? Are we doing our current incentives correctly? For example, the multi, multi-family tax exemption. Right now we have that open to anybody, multi-family tax exemption. By that to be specific to providing affordable housing. So those are some questions we'll have to tackle in the next year. So our housing code update will be early next year. And then also we want to return again as an implementing tool now that we're going to reevaluate or have reevaluated our industrial center through the infrastructure analysis, combining the land use into a single category. We need to make sure that we have effective regulations for that zone to continue to spur our economic development. So that's really a snapshot of sort of the next five big code updates, but definitely two will be coming to this body through the end of the year. Dave, Christie, do you have anything to add to that before we hand it off sort of to the commission for any questions?
I do not, Kristy.
Just except for working collaboratively with public works work on our ed standards and also and same with parks, with parks and recreation. So it's a, it's a, been a good collaborative process and we have probably another month or so to go on.
Excellent. Do, are these two, the streets and the process code, are they time sensitive? Do we have to have them done by the end of December?
Not by the end of December, but we do want to, after we're done with the comp plan, we do have some work that we need to get.
My, my concern is that we always have something that hits us right at the end while holidays are going on. And it seems rushed. In years past, we've had some pretty weighty things that come in at the end of the year that seem rushed.
No, we're not asking for decisions, but it'll be starting.
Okay.
The process on these.
Okay.
We absolutely expect these to be four to six month processes that will bleed over definitely into first or maybe second quarter of '25.
Any other questions?
No, just a comment. I think, you know, this is, this is a very lofty goal as they always are. And looking at, you know, how many potential meetings there are in a quarter, which is what, six? I think there are five, five, five items on here that identify as fourth quarter. So I think we're going to be really asking a lot out of those meetings. So we might need to prioritize perhaps which comes first in order to, you know, see where our chips go. Cause we're going to probably lose meetings for Thanksgiving, probably going to lose meetings around Christmas. And all of a sudden, we're down to like four or five meetings for the end of the year at the most, I think.
And I think as far as this year, that's all we're really identifying to start with the planning commission in the fourth quarter is the streets and the process. The ones with strike through or ones, I would look at the red notes that say we're pushing those out to 2025. And then two items are being combined, the design review and the process code become combined because they're really parts of the same enabling legislation.
Okay. Any other comments from the commissioners? Thank you. Appreciate the heads up. And we will look forward to discussion on October 2nd. I hope that there's good turnout. This is important stuff. We did have someone join us and so I want to back up in the agenda, just asking if our guests online would like to address the planning commission and staff. If so, raise your hand. Your digital, yes. You're raising your hand. We can't see you.
It's our on a phone, they need to unmute.
Yes, unmute if you're on the phone. And, and if there are comments that you want to make directly to staff, I would urge you to do so. There is going to be a public hearing on October 2nd where we review all of the things on the comp plan and we invite you to join us either online or in person on October 2nd as where, as well. But staff is available to answer any specific questions as you wish. Okay, with that, I will move on to commissioner reports. I have none. I'll start tonight. I have no commissioner reports. Commissioner Dewar.
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Davis.
I have a commissioner question. I'm curious if there's any update on our empty seat on the commission. I just hadn't asked about it in a while, so I was curious.
Yes, so we, when we initially had advertised it, we only received one application. We read advertised it and we do have three applicants now. And the city clerk is working on getting an interview time scheduled for that.
Okay, we're moving on.
Commissioner Martin.
So I know the October 2nd meeting is important, but I will not be able to make it. If you could just make note of that. Thanks. And that's all.
Thank you for letting us know in advance. With that, I turn the time back over to you. Community Development Director, I keep skipping out the development.
That is okay.
Okay, I'm shortening it.
That's okay.
Time is all yours.
I can just give the commission a quick update. The council had a retreat last Friday at the council retreat. The largest topic really was budget and just sort of walking through the mayor's budget and what sort of the assumptions are. It is a relatively flat budget. So the mayor and city administrator have been very deliberate in, you know, positions, equipment, et cetera. And that will go to the council through the end of the year to make those, those hard decisions. But that was a good discussion. We also gave a presentation on some capital projects as well as our municipal services campus, which are some of the big things that our teams are working on. Don't have any other comments? Open to any additional questions from the commission? Don't have any other comments? Open to any additional questions from the commission?
Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone want to stay longer? Then the meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much. And thank you for those that attended this evening. Please tell your friends because we need discussion on the second.